Good morning, everybody. I'm going to ask you to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're not going to be taking any formal actions. We don't need any motions. We're not approving our agenda. This is basically a working session of the commission, so we do have an agenda. But the idea is, quite honestly, a frank and open discussion about ARPA funding and give us the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, get input. And this will probably be the first of at least two that we will be doing. So keep the conversation flowing and let's see if we can do this in two hours or less. So hopefully we can. So Ben, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. So Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. I thought today what I'd do is kind of just give us an overview of what the process, things we want to talk about. Then we'll go through some of the external and internal requests we've gotten and then have some time for review at the end. So just to kind of remind everybody that the county will receive about $37.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding that needs to be spent by the end of 2024. Or at least, I guess, committed by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. The county's received external and internal requests for the use of this money. You know, external ones primarily being water-related. We've got some other community project requests as well. And then we've got the internal requests, as we've discussed, the potential uses with various departments in the county. You know, so those internal requests or uses, I guess I might say, are ones that fall within the existing guidelines that ARPA has. And then there's also some potential expanded guidelines as the US Congress is debating what some passage of some more flexibility for the use of ARPA funds. I guess I like to kind of think about the allocation and possibly how we want to use these funds, either in two buckets, right? You could either do it, you could spend funds on internal or external uses. Those external requests, again, I talked about, is primarily water. Those could be transformative type of projects for some communities. The state has also recently announced there's some guidelines for possible matching uses of those funds. So if the county would allocate some money to a particular water project, the state may match some of those funds. But the thing, one of the things to consider on those external uses does, would require a sub-recipient agreement. So it's not like when we, if we would give the money for a water project, our responsibility leaves. We still have responsibilities to monitor those projects and make sure they're being spent appropriately. And then once, another thing to consider on those externals is that once we've allocated those funds, we really lose the flexibility of using that versus internal request. And then when we think about internal requests, you know, the uses, there's uses under the current guidelines and there's uses under those proposed expanded guidelines. Some of the uses would just provide general fund relief, right? If we're looking for, just to free up general fund budget, that's some of the things that those uses provide. You can also allow for some expanded services or one-time funding for larger projects. You know, using these funds for internal uses allows the county to maintain the flexibility in how the funds could be used so that we could, we could, obviously said, we're going to use ARPA funds for something that qualifies today, but two years from now, we could make some change in that when, if you keep those as internal uses and things. And then, you know, think about the management of the ARPA funds. You know, we have lots of smaller dollar items or COVID-related items we could use this for or which would just require some more administration on use of those but versus allocating it for larger projects to make it much easier to obviously manage those projects. So what we'll do today is I'll review the external requests. Susan Beeman will review the internal request. We'll pause for questions after the external request and all the internal department requests so that the commission can have opportunity to ask questions. We'll review some 2021 eligible expenses that could be claimed for reimbursement this year yet. And then we'll allow some additional questions after all the requests are reviewed and try to summarize at the end.
That's the plan.
Okay. So... So the, up here, what we have in front of us is, these are some of the external requests that we've received. Again, primarily water-related projects from the communities. So the City of Brandon has about three projects that they submitted to us for varying degrees. Hartford has a proposal for a regional wastewater treatment to service not only Hartford but some other communities in the western part of the county. Minnehaha County Water Corporation is also looking to improve their water distribution and storage. So they've got some needs for additional funding. City of Sioux Falls, you know, they've recently built it, or building a new wastewater treatment plant. They could use some funding to help complete that. Lewis &amp; Clark Regional Water System is, again, they're looking to expand the water system. They provide a lot of water to the rural areas in South Dakota and Minnehaha County. And then we've various other external requests. I think we've had the Children's Inn, who was presented, or a few weeks ago to the commission, they realized that we have ARPA funds that potentially could be allocated to them. Lifescape is contacted, as I think the number of community-based projects is probably infinite that, you know, you could consider. But, you know, we've got right around $66 million. That's probably just got a low end of the estimate. I'm sure we could allocate many more monies.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner. Can, so particularly, I mean, because all the wastewater, that all falls in kind of the same bucket as far as type of project that's being asked for. When we get to these other community projects, can you just help us understand what limitations under ARPA we might have as to what we could and could not fund? Does that make sense? Like, can we just give $2 million to some community-based project for whatever reason, to spend on whatever they want to spend it on?
I'll let Susan speak to that. She's more fluent in that.
Do you guys hear me okay? Okay. I'm going to answer that as it's going to depend. You know, there are, right now, we are limited to the guidance in the interim final rule that covers the ARPA funds as well as our FAQ documents that the Treasury has put out. So what I would suggest we do, if that's something that you want to entertain, we would ask that those parties submit a formal request and then we would have to evaluate that against the guidance from the Treasury.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not $2 million that we could just give them and they're free and clear. We'd have to make sure that it complies with that interim final rule that's put out today.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a way to find out which of these projects would be eligible for a match? So if we put in a million, the state or federal puts in a million, is there a way to determine that?
I think there is. The state has put out some guidelines and not that familiar with them. I just know that they will match up to a certain dollar amount. I think we've gotten some communication from, I think, the Minnehaha Community Water Corporation indicating that to us. I haven't done some research. I think Carol's office might have done some research on that. But there, we could identify, you know, how much the matches could be.
I had breakfast with Mark Cotter this morning from the city and he had pointed out that, I believe specifically, Minnehaha Rural Water would be eligible for matches, either if the county put in and the state would put in. So, I mean, if we can, to me, getting the biggest bang for the buck by, if we can double the money just by doing that would, in my point, elevate that project on the list, so, okay.
Is there a process that the legislature is going to go through to approve those? And will they have to have that complete by the end of the legislative session?
I don't know that it's going to be a legislative review. I think it's going to be more the governor's office and whether those projects would submit that request and see if it qualifies.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ben, I guess my worry is that, you know, we give Brandon $2 million bucks and they say, oh, you know, we don't have to spend any money. And I think that hoping on a regional basis is what our aspiration should be and not to, you know, how much are they bringing to the table and what's their actual need? Obviously, we can't fund all of these, so, you know, on the other hand, which are the top two or three projects that need to be supported? And I guess I'd like to see what Brandon has, what Hartford has, before I just throw money at them anyways.
Do you know if the state has put together a process for applications at this point? Are we still at the very early stages of what they're going to help with, other than they're saying they'll match some? Do they have a process?
I think they have some guidelines that have been out. We haven't gotten those, but I think the water corporations have received those.
Okay.
So I think there is some sort of process out there.
To your point, Commissioner Barth, just because somebody asks for a million doesn't mean we have to give them a million. I mean, if we fund, partial funding of some of these, just to do what we can, basically, makes sense in my mind.
Okay. So that's my coverage on external. If you want, we can then proceed with reviewing the internal uses.
If I might. Ben, so, you know, we have a total there, but we don't have an item-by-item cost suggested. We have those numbers elsewhere, right?
Yeah, we have been provided some other numbers related to most of those projects. Thank you.
All righty. Again, it's just maybe only the beginning of a list. And are we expecting additional funding to come through at this next round?
No. So we, the $37.5 million will be, is the total amount that we will receive, so we won't expect any more.
Okay. And this is money that came directly from the federal government without coming through the state, which...
That's correct.
From visiting with some legislators last week, they weren't overly excited about that process. But, so, there could be other things that the legislature funds that could come through us or not.
Only if through the matching funds, right? We have total control of our, how we're going to use 37.5 million. So I guess, getting to our matching, that matching process is the only way the state would be involved. There are some cities, that smaller communities in the state, that didn't receive the funds directly. They were sent to the state and then the state would then manage that for them, basically. But those are smaller communities.
And I think you made a very valid point, one of your first comments, that if we give the money to someone, we're responsible for making sure that it is spent according to guidelines. So that's a little bit of a game changer, too.
Yeah. I think that's important to consider, right? Your partner that you work with, you're going to be very comfortable with them. They're going to be good shepherds of that money, right? And they're going to have to monitor them. It's not, you give it to them and it's, you know, you're out of the responsibility.
All righty. Okay. On to internal.
So our first department that we're going to discuss is the Sheriff's Office. So I'll go through the Sheriff's Office and then I'll log out when I go through that list. And then some of the representatives are here for questions, if you have any. The first item that has been identified is the salaries for the staff in the area of the jail who are COVID-positive inmates. And so the, as those salaries are directly related to COVID management, we would be eligible to get reimbursement under ARPA for those salaries.
Commissioner Karski. So just before we kind of dive into this, can you clarify for us and for those that are watching, why some things are in black and some things are in red?
Certainly. So items in red, we've identified as potential 2021 expenditures. There's a potential for the jail salaries to also be included for 2021. We need some further analysis on that to determine how we go back to March to capture that data. So that's not a solid number yet, and so that's why we don't have that in red. But the red items are ones that you'll see later in the presentation as things that we want to...
Just a moment. I'm getting a sign that they can't hear you. Oh. Closer to, they'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out. The red items are ones that are identified as 2021 eligible items that we would like you to consider. You'll see those on a list later on in the presentation. The jail salaries is one that's potential, but we have some further analysis that needs to be done and we can discuss that at a later date.
Okay. I don't know that that's completely clear, but we'll go for, we'll just go forward on that.
The 2021 recommendations need to be spent by December 31st of this year?
Correct. So the 2021 items that we'll have on the slide later, we've captured the data and the dollars that we have spent year-to-date and we'll share that with you.
Thank you.
So the second item identified by our Sheriff's Office is the additional registered nurse position that was added for COVID management and the intake process. And you'll see...
Do you want to trade mics? We'll do that. It is. Okay. Would you like me to go back from the beginning? Are we okay? Okay. You'll also note that you'll see some items '21 through 2024. Some things you'll see a specific year behind them. Just wanted to call out those items that are, say, '21 are things that are throughout 2021. There are other ones or ones that are maybe proposed for later on during a next fiscal year. The third item is an upgrade to mobile communications equipment to help our Sheriff's Office and law enforcement respond to, to community needs within Minnehaha County. The fourth item is the adding of an additional mental health counselor in the jail to help with our, that area of, of our inmates. One thing that you'll see throughout the interim final rule and things coming from ARPA is understanding that the pandemic has exacerbated mental health and substance abuse issues. And so that's one area that's eligible under ARPA is expanded mental health services. And so that's one item that's been proposed by our Sheriff's Office. And the next item is just our medical expenses related to COVID treatment. And then the following item would be, they've identified a number of items, just capital-related, that they could use related to mitigating and responding to COVID within the Sheriff's Office. And the final is just routine supplies to help manage COVID that they've had throughout 2021 and ongoing in the next fiscal years.
Commissioner Karski.
Please.
If I may. One thing I just did want to point out, I didn't want to interrupt you right when you were going through it though, but I was informed this morning that that upgrade to the mobile communications equipment would also benefit our highway department, as there's some dead spots out in the county that they, they think that that would also be a benefit for them to improve their communications.
So at this point, if you have questions, Sheriff Milstead and his team are available for questions. If you want more, if you have questions for the auditor's office or them, we'd be happy to help answer any questions you may have.
Questions? I know I have one or two. I guess when it comes to, well, first, registered nurse and the additional mental health counselor, are we viewing those as contract labor? Are they going to be FTEs to the county? What's the game plan or structure for these individuals? Do we have places to house them? I know one of our other offices made the, asked the same question, but they just don't have a place to put them. So are we looking at adding these people as FTEs to the county's payroll? Are we looking at, you know, because it's COVID-related and it's, mental health counseling may diminish? I doubt it. But are we, how are we imagining these people would be employed? Anybody have an idea on that?
Yeah, so any of the nurses or mental health people, those would be included in our contract services with our medical provider. It's our understanding with the interim rules that we can still use a third party to utilize the funds. So we're not creating any FTEs on the nurse or the mental health counselor for the county.
Commissioner?
So it's kind of more for Ben, but on the ones, they say '21 through '24. And further down the list, I know we have a list of '21. So when we approve or, you know, what we approve on the 2021 budgeting things, will that just be for 2021 and we'll continue to move forward in 2022 with another discussion?
Yeah, good question. Good question. You know, we will provide you with 2021 expenses. If you want to give direction that you want us to continue through the remainder of the period, you know, 2024, you know, we will start, you know, identifying those expenses going forward. But that's just a direction we'd look from the commission to give us.
But we could still make, I mean, if we decide to just, because obviously we're not making any actions today. It's just suggestions. If, you know, we've got two more meetings to make those motions. In January, right away, we could readdress it and decide how far we, where we wanted to go, if we wanted to, and it's not an issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Ms. Bender has her hand up.
Go ahead.
Well, my question to Mr. Warden is, so if we have this extra contract person in place, is it our intention to keep that on an ongoing basis?
As you can see, it's through 2024. I'm assuming you're talking about the additional mental health counselor. As we continue to grow, that, there is definitely going to be a need. And I would foresee that our budget with our medical provider would include an additional person at some point.
Ben, just to clarify, our budget, we currently have this, we added this nursing position earlier this year, so it'd be...
The nurse, yes.
Yeah.
The mental health counselor would be in addition to what we currently have.
Correct. Thank you.
Can they help retired commissioners? Would JDC have access to this mental health or, I mean, does JDC also need? I see they're on the list for mental health counselor also, so, if you don't mind, Jamie?
This would be a new position for us and we would hope that we'd be able to prove over the three, two to three years that this is an ongoing need that we have with the increased mental health. We're looking at contracting for 20 hours with a QMHP in our mental health area throughout the week. We feel that that would address our needs.
For 2022, just kind of to get started?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We're hoping that we can fund it through this period and show that, at the end of that period, that it's something that we need to continue.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, inasmuch as Scott McMahon is here, I wonder if I could ask him a question. Would additional funding to emergency communications include new towers for better coverage on mobile? Or would we be buying additional of the new radios for ambulance and fire responders?
Yes, Commissioner, I think there's two separate projects there. One would be radio communication equipment, such as portable radios for rural fire. And then there's a different project that would involve expansion of a simulcast radio system, which is the towers you referred to.
Our radio coverage for the mobile units is not that great. I mean, as I looked at the map, it's really spotty. And it's a big concern, I think, for our firefighters in the county.
Correct, and law enforcement and highway department and anybody else that might use the radio.
Thank you. Commissioner Heiberg?
Just kind of following up of where Commissioner Barth was going is that, obviously, we'll have to dig into a little bit about the sheriff's request for updating mobile communications. And he maybe has, I haven't had a chance to sit down with him yet, to figure out what you're getting and what we're getting and where that works together. Because obviously, you don't want to cross over or spend money where we don't need to and there's other needs to. So I think there's just more conversation to be had in digging into the weeds on that one. And maybe they already have, so...
And I'm curious, too, with Commissioner Bender's comment about the Sheriff's Office and the upgrade to mobile communications equipment. I mean, is the highway department and the sheriff's department on the same system? Is that... I like the idea of killing two birds with one stone, but...
Mr. Chairman, point of order, I guess. I think we should stick with our method of having people identify themselves when they come to the podium.
I'll start with that. Matt Tugley with Metro Communications. Currently, any, all agencies in the county are using the state radio system. So our county fire departments, ambulances, county highway, sheriff, as well as all our state responders, all use the same radio system. As Commissioner Barth had mentioned, the west side of the county, we don't have, we don't have a lot of really good coverage for portable radio. Mobile radios are good. It's the portable radios which are the probably more important ones when they're out of their vehicles and need to talk. They don't have the power in their radios to get out. So one of the, the projects with the mobile communication is expanding the tower system to improve the portable radio coverage, so. Commissioner Heiberg, where you were going, we are working with state and everything. It'll be a lot bigger project than just Minnehaha County.
So would, is it possible, then, that funding for that type of a program could come at the state level?
It's the state, so... Historically, when it comes to the radio expansion, they do like to see some local feet underground. They're not going to be able to fund, our whole project overall, the project, the portion of the project that Sheriff's Office is putting in is a small portion of the actual project. Maybe, maybe a fourth of the actual project that we're looking at, which is, we're looking at expanding coverage in the city as well as south of the city as well. And those are separate than what the Sheriff's Office is asking for on the radio expansion. So...
Just more digging to do.
No, yeah, there's definitely a work in progress, so, thank you.
The next department on our list is the Juvenile Detention Center. As we discussed previously, Jamie and his team has identified the need for some additional mental health counseling hours out at his location. Related to that, as we're all aware, they've had an increase in mental health holds out there. And related to that, they need to install some additional cameras and body protection equip, and have body protection equipment to help with those mental health holds. So that's something that currently is an unbudgeted item for him, but it would help them... But it would help them respond to the increase in mental health needs of his, of his JDC. And then the third item on their list is the need for some substance abuse training. As many of the juveniles out there are, have substance abuse issues and they'd like to see some additional hours and training for, for their team out there. Jamie's here, if you have questions for him on these items.
Anybody want to bring Jamie back for questions? I guess the only question, the substance abuse training, is that an ongoing thing, Jamie? Is that just kind of a one, once a year? I mean, what's, can you elaborate on it?
It'd be contracting with a local service provider to provide prevention services for the youth and staff training throughout the year. So it'd be a, a contract position for up to eight hours a week. It's similar to what they do in the school system.
So this would be training given to your staff or?
It, it would be actually services to the youth. And then some of that would be additional training for our staff as well. But mainly it'd be the services provided to the youth, chemical dependency evaluations, prevention services, classes throughout the week. It'd be a, a chemical dependency counselor from a local provider coming in and providing those services to the youth.
So there's nothing like that being provided at this time?
Not currently, no.
Mr. Chairman, just as with the jail, it seems like this will be an ongoing expense, even if it's contracted out or whatever. But, you know, a year and a half of chemical dependency isn't going to solve the problem in our state.
It, it is an ongoing expense that we'd like to contract further than this period of time. This is again, something that we want to get started for the youth and then show that it's a necessary need that we want to continue on. It's a relatively inexpensive service. It's around $10,000 to $15,000 a year.
One five, 10 to 15?
10, 10 to 15, yes.
Other questions for Jamie? All righty.
Our next area is our facilities area, essentially our building components. And most of the areas within this category really central, center on COVID mitigation improvements and expenses. So Mark Krins has identified a, a number of projects that are proposed and some of them are already been discussed. The first item is some improved air exchange in a number of our buildings on campus. The second item would be the improving the front, the front entrance of the courthouse. As I think we're all aware, when you go into the courthouse, it's very, there's not a lot of space right when you go in the door with security, just seeing what we could be, could be done with trying to improve social distancing in that area. There's a, a handful of identified building improvements in human services and the admin building related to improving social distancing and sanitation that could be considered. And another item would be an upgrade to our security badge system that would help with COVID track, COVID contract tracing if needed. And then the next item outside of improvements would be that the team has had a dedicated staff to help with sanitation of our buildings with our high-touch areas. That would be an area to help reimburse us for those salaries related to that COVID sanitation that could be considered. And then finally, Mark and his team reoccurringly purchase supplies that are help with managing COVID and COVID sanitation and things like that within our building. And Mark is here, if you have questions for him.
Welcome back, Mark. Questions for Mark? Mr. Bender?
Mark, I'm just curious if you could help us understand what are these, I mean, what are these expenses or things that we've already done that we'd be likely getting reimbursed for? That we were doing anyway and which of them would be new? Like the courthouse remodel to the entrance would be new? What are the other things on here that would be brand new?
So the courthouse front entrance, the admin, we're looking at some renovation project for the treasurer's office to help with the congestion in the hallway downstairs. That's basically, you know, it's basically about it for new stuff. Some minor HVAC stuff, a lot of these buildings have not a lot of, they don't have any automation on their fresh air incoming to the building. So there's a lot of improvements we could do just on air quality in the buildings. Also helps on utilities, obviously, when we're economizing. So some of the other projects, the, the card reader upgrades that we've been doing here for the past year and into the next couple of years, they actually have a COVID tracing software that you can, you can get a report ran when somebody is tested positive and, and it'll give you everybody else that badged into the same area, you know, for a certain amount of time. So we thought that would be a good one for, to cover some of those projects. The health bill, or the human services, that's the front desk expansion that I'm currently working on. And, and a lot of that focus on that project originally was social distancing. So now that's already funded through the billing fund, but we, we thought that that could be funded through this rather than through the county fund, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Most of these improvements, I think, are going to be long-lasting and one-time expenses. I, I really, you know, if our grandchildren are going to have to pay for this, I'm happy that they'll be able to use this. The idea of improved security with the badge system, you know, if, if Carol Muller's laptop disappears and they see I was the only one in there, you know, I might become a suspect. But the point being that I think these are the kinds of things I would like to see us do. And, you know, the, the entrance to the courthouse is congested. And I look forward to a building committee meeting where we talk about it. But anyway, I like, I like these expenses. Mark, if it's possible, usually facility numbers are a little bigger than most sometimes, depending on what the items are, obviously. I'm wondering if eventually you could put together, I'm going to guess none of these are going to happen in 2021 before the end of the year. If you could put together some itemization of each one of these based on what your specs will be, I guess? And, and talk about when they may need to be done and what priority they would be in.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you.
How many other, I like the idea that we're looking at our building improvements, but this building, how many things that we're doing in here with our remodel? Have we really vetted that list to make, to see if any of those others could be carried over like you did with human services?
Yeah, so not a lot has been, you know, vetted through the whole project. You know, they're, the, the card readers, obviously, but I mean, even, even a lot of the, you know, the, the occupancy sensors in the restrooms and, you know, touchless faucets and toilets, all that's, you know, kind of basically standard anymore. So we can review that and see if there's any additional things that we can, we can do. But that's, I mean, those, those things have already been discussed, you know, as part of the project. I guess if I'm, if I'm following you, what you're looking for as far as other COVID.
The AVI for when we move this chamber, that type of thing, is that all looked at?
That's actually further down on the list.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to, anything that we can save our building committee, our building funds on, because building needs of the county are going to be ongoing. And if we can save money for future projects by offsetting this, to me, makes sense, so. All righty. Anything else moving on?
The next item on our list is for human resources. The, our HR team has continually spent hours since beginning of COVID, but ongoing related to COVID management and contract tracing. And so we could consider having them track their hours related to that COVID management and get recouped off, out of the ARPA funds for their salary expenses for that work. And then the next item on the next page is one thing that we're evaluating is whether or not we could recoup and get reimbursed through ARPA for our employee costs, for our employee medical costs related to COVID. That's something that we need a little bit further analysis on, but we wanted to just make you aware that's something that we're considering and evaluating.
Commissioner Harskey, so as you look and evaluate that, is the idea that the money, if we did recover that, that it would go back into the health fund and just build up the reserve in the health fund? I don't want employees to hear that and think that they're going to get money directly back to them.
Correct, it would be something that would re, help offset our, our health fund here.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question.
All righty, good question.
And Carrie Devers is here, if you have any questions for her.
You said a number of times that we're going to need to reevaluate some of those pieces. Are you going to be able to get all that done before the end of the year?
So specifically on the employee COVID medical expenses, the guidance within the interim final rule and the FAQ talks about medical expenses as being something that's allowed to be reimbursed. It doesn't necessarily go into that level of employee medical in a self-funded plan. And so we have actually submitted that as a question to our, through CCOG, to Aid Bailey for some, some guidance and review of that item to see if they agree with that would be an eligible item. So we are hoping that that's answered by the end of the year, but again, I, I don't know for sure at this point.
So if we, excuse me, so we don't get those answers from Aid Bailey or whomever before the end of the year? Can we carry those over or is that another part of that question?
That is probably the second, the second part of that question. I have a, an email into our Department of Legislative Audit to ask that same question. And I will be following up with them to set up a time to discuss.
Commissioner Heiberg?
That was the same question I had.
Good.
So I, I would just add, I think the dollars probably related to those relatively are small, right? I mean, they're probably less than a million dollars. I don't think that will prevent us from being able to allocate all the monies, but just, you know, try to identify things that we can.
I agree that they probably aren't the larger line items, but I don't want to lose them by not getting them included this year and then they say we can't carry it forward.
Agreed.
All righty.
Our next area is our human services area. The one area of the interim final rule that is really focused on is responding to those individuals that had negative impacts related to the pandemic. And one item that's specifically identified is providing rental and utility assistance to those with that financial need. The, our human services areas has expended dollars out of general fund related to that need within our community and our county. And that would be eligible as well as burial assistance to households that suffered that negative economic impact, but also be an eligible item. That third item under human services is transportation to COVID testing. And maybe just to explain what that is, since it's a little, it's a little unusual, it's the transportation for maybe individuals that are at like homeless shelters that they don't have transportation to go get tested. And so human services has partnered with, with an individual to help provide that service to get, to get those people tested. The fourth item that they have suggested is providing some type of direct grants to businesses and nonprofits that suffered through COVID hardship. And then the fifth item is some job training assistance and apprenticeships through local community colleges. And I believe we have someone from human services here to help answer questions.
Mr. Heiberg?
Two of them on here, the burial assistance and the rent and utility assistance. There was a comment at one point that I heard that possibly those would have the liens removed from those people. And my response to that at the time was it's not very fair to pick a small portion of the population right here from one, one year and say, now we're going to erase your liens too. So I'm wondering if that is part of the thought or, and also would be very difficult to do for, I think, our staff to try to figure out who's been leaned during that period. So I'm wondering if those reimbursements for the burial assistance and the rental assistance would just be a reimbursement to our county general funds, human services, whatever, going forward? Or are they looking at reimbursing the actual expenses for the exact, actual person and then removing the liens?
I, you know, I think when we evaluated this, we would, we were considering how we could go back to, to remove those liens. We've had some preliminary conversations with state's attorney about it. If this is something that you are interested in pursuing, we would need to have further dialogue with state's attorney to figure out the mechanism and how that would be done. The other piece to that is starting in 2022, the, actually starting now, we are administering the South Dakota Cares Fund via the state. And so going forward, there's that consideration that these expenses would move into that fund versus using ARPA funds. So I think right now what we're asking for consideration or for your thought on is 2021 expenditures.
So that partially answered my question, Susan, but do we have to specifically tie those ARPA funds to individual people or individual asks? Or is it human services spent $100,000 on burials? We can reimburse the county for $100,000 of burial during that time?
So it would be, it's essentially both, because the human services number is made up of all of that individual need for that, for those individuals. So it, you know, if somebody was $100 for rental assistance, that $100 was paid to that, that rent, that landlord, that's part of that human services line.
But still, does, does it have to be tied back to the liens? Or can it just be tied back to the fact that we spent that money? Like, like in the sheriff's office, we have people who took care of COVID-related patients as staff. And so we'll be reimbursing those staff dollars and that money will go back into the general fund. But there's, it's not like they're getting that bonus check on top of what they had, is what I'm asking.
I think what I hear you asking is if it, it's specifically related to the lien. And I don't know if I can answer that question. I think we'll have to have that analysis with state's attorney.
Okay.
To determine that. So again, I think that's one of those areas that we need direction from the commission on. If you want to consider that, then we now need to go do all, we need to get those answers from state's attorney and have them help evaluate this.
All right, thanks, Susan.
Mr. Bender?
So this is a question for the auditor as well. As with the prior issue where you needed some additional guidance from Aid Bailey on, on how something was to be interpreted, are there a lot of other line items that we're talking about today where we still need further clarification, whether they're even eligible expenses? Or are most of the things that we're talking about today, things that you feel comfortable could be reimbursed with, or covered with ARPA funds?
The majority of the items that we're talking about today, we are comfortable with ARPA, is ARPA eligible? There are specifically like with this item with the liens, it's going to require quite a bit of research. And if those are things that, if the commissions, you know, have, in a, going in a different direction, we wanted to kind of have that thought process from the commission before we put our resources in that area. And so that's where at this point, we're just kind of trying to get that information out to you to kind of get your thoughts on where to, to focus our efforts.
I would just add to that for sure, my own. That, you know, I think for each one of these requests, the auditor's office is, is responsible for reviewing those and making sure that they qualify under the guidelines, right? So we've given you our best effort here to identify items that. So we've given you our best effort here to identify items that qualify. If we can still qualify, but if you gave us directions and yes, we want to try and allocate money to that particular item, we'd have to go back and confirm that each one of these expenses qualify.
And, and maybe to add to Ben's response, with all of these things, the interim final rule and FAQ that has been put out for the treasury kind of gives us that framework of what are eligible items. As part of the agreements as well, talks about all of these federal principles that we have to abide by as well, as far as how expenses are managed, audit requirements, things like that. So once we determine something's eligible, then we need to go to that next layer to make sure all of the rest of it is in line as well as what we've agreed that we will do.
Commissioner Bender?
So kind of in follow-up to that question and the part of the reason I asked it, there are two, the last two items here are in my mind fairly general, and I'm not exactly sure how they'd even be implemented, but the job training assistance and the direct grants to businesses and nonprofits, are those things that you, are those items that you feel comfortable are available under ARPA?
Those are specifically identified in the interim final rule as eligible items. And that's, you know, as you indicated about how it would be implemented, those are things that the commission and the county will need to consider how that would be done. Because some of these things, we already have an infrastructure to do, other things we don't. If we were to do something like that, we would need to evaluate how that would be rolled out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Hager?
I have a comment, and I don't really want a response for this, but as I'm listening to everything that has to be done, I'm just concerned that maybe the auditor's office is going to need another staff person in the next few years just to handle all, because they're already doing a lot. And we just added a whole dump of millions of dollars on it. So I don't want a response, Ben, but I mean, I think that we all just need to be aware that that might happen too. So that's not ARPA money, that's general fund money, so.
ARPA allows the hiring of a consultant to manage these funds, I don't know.
Yeah, there is some, I think a language that allows for some administrative cost recapture on these that, you know, we can include in part of the allocation, I guess.
Yeah, should be.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, it seems to me like some of these things, like job training and stuff, are actually external requests and maybe, I think indigent burials certainly are in our, in our area of concern. You know, I don't know that we can tell who, you know, passed away from the pandemic and, and who died from their gunshot wound, but I think, I, I'm not sure I'm sympathetic with job training. It's not a, something that we commonly do. Meanwhile, the city's got, the city of Sioux Falls at least, has millions of dollars they're throwing everywhere else, let them do it.
Moving on. Can I ask one other question? Susan or Ben, on the South Dakota Cares Act, does that take priority over some of the ARPA funding? Or is that pretty fuzzy to be able to do that?
I'll respond, and I think Lori can expand on it. I don't necessarily know if it takes priority or if one has more priority than the other. I think the South Dakota Cares Funds has a different eligibility requirements that Lori can speak to, and that might be good to kind of give you that background.
Thank you.
Yeah, so do you have a specific question on South Dakota Cares and kind of that?
Every time I look at it, I have a question.
We've started processing those applications in our partnership with the state, so we too have many questions, but we're learning every day and we are finding that we're using the bulk of our time and the bulk of their money for processing anything related to rent and utilities, which is our primary service we provide to people. So I will say that will by far reduce our budget expenses for those areas.
Okay. I was wondering if I was the only one that was confused with that.
And then if I may, could I just add one thing that didn't make it to this list that I know we had wanted to bring forward as just a consideration? And that is training for case management. So one of the things that we would like to pull together is putting, pulling together resources both internally and probably externally as well to do training of people in how to do case management. That's a really broad term and there's a lot of definitions to that, I think. And so we're really wanting to try and help other agencies that are doing case management that reach out to us on a regular basis to provide that service for their folks with some guidance and some resources on how to do case management, like at the shelters or that kind of thing. So I just want to make sure that gets to the list, I'm not sure how it got left off. But I know we were on top of this, as of this summer, we put together ideas. So some of this maybe has morphed a little bit with what the state is doing. And so your comments as to some of that job training and that kind of thing, I understand that, and I think the state is looking at doing some of those things, or maybe already is doing some of those things now. But I just wanted to make sure we got that case management training piece added to the list as well for consideration.
Is that a position then, or is it a program?
It would just be a training, probably like a two-day training is what we were thinking of bringing people together and some experts in that area to provide that training.
Do you have any information about whether that's an ARPA-eligible expenditure?
No, I don't know specifically. I know training is one, and a lot of counties are providing some different kinds of training, but whether that specific type, I don't know, it would need further research just to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our item, on our list is our state's attorney's office. One of the areas that the FAQ document put out by the treasury is specifically identified is that there's been a backlog in court cases related to the pandemic and providing resources to our, our court system and our attorney's offices to help clear up that case log would, backlog would be something that we could consider. And so as we've discussed in previous meetings, that consideration of that software that state's attorney has proposed is something that they feel would help clear up some of that backlog in court cases and help them expedite their cases. And then the second item that they've identified is just potentially consider a grant program for community businesses to provide grants to improve their security systems as if there are good security systems, they feel that that could help with support for cases and things like that.
We might also add, the public defender's office has reached out to us recently too about they have backlog of cases that, you know, ARPA funds could potentially be used to hire some contract attorneys to help reduce that, that backlog that might have been caused by COVID.
That's approved by ARPA funding?
My mic going off, yes, those. Expenditures that would help reduce the backlog would be helpful.
Just follow up on what Ben said is that the public defender's office did suggest that, and they suggested picking a specific type of a case, whether it was juvenile cases or A and N cases or something, stake, take one specific type and contract and that, I mean, that's obviously not a bad idea if it's reimbursable and also probably would help the state's attorney's office too if they were interested in just throwing out on more ideas because we don't know what we're doing yet, so.
If there's any further questions from both offices or here if you have questions. All righty. We can hire defenders, not prosecutors.
Okay. The next area is our commission's area. The item that is first on the list is consideration for our contributions to the link for mental health and substance abuse management. As I've indicated before, expanded mental health and substance abuse services is something that is eligible under ARPA. So that is something that could be considered. That's probably another one that might be considered as outside as well. And so we'd have to evaluate that for subrecipient agreements and things like that, but something for you to, to think about as well. Next item is just some administrative software for the commission's office to help with social distancing and improving that electronic communications for our public to have easier access to data versus having to come into our office and things like that. And then the third item is, kind of was touched on by, by Mark and the facilities, is select mitigation, COVID mitigation, mitigation equipment in our admin building. He references like the touchless faucets and things like that. That line is, kind of encompasses that.
Commissioner Bender?
I'm sorry, but I was confused by something you said about the link. I mean, we have a contractual obligation to make contributions to the link, so why would we need a subrecipient agreement?
So today, we're using county funds. If you're going to want to consider using ARPA funds to help expand that or to fulfill that, you, we can't just turn over dollars that we paid for with, that we received federal money for without having that subrecipient or some type of contract. There's specific languages within contracts that are required by federal grant awards. So we'd have to evaluate that to determine what would need to be changed or amended, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
And I, you know, being on the link board, I understand it, you know, that where you're, what you're saying, but have we communicated with anybody there that, you know, if they're looking and it doesn't necessarily have to be, well, Avera has a contract for all the medical stuff at the link, but if they wanted to expand the contract to include some sort of mental health or substance abuse, that's the process?
At this point, I don't think any of us have had any conversation with them about these funds or anything like that as we were evaluating what potential expenditures would be. This was one, since it's that expanded service to the community, it serves that population that maybe had that, that increased need over the pandemic. We thought this might be something that we could consider evaluating using dollars for.
It would not be an expansion of the contract, but rather it's a community expansion since March 3rd.
Yeah, because we've lost our counselors of Southeastern Behavioral Health for the link, went from, I can't remember how many hours a week down to zero basically, so it would be an interesting conversation, I think, so, okay.
And Carol's here, if you have other questions on any of the items for the commission's office?
I don't think so.
The next item that we've identified is related to the highway department. There's some, related to the new highway shop project, there's some water infrastructure out there that is part of that project that could be evaluated and considered for that, that water infrastructure component under the ARPA funds that's currently eligible. Under IT, we have identified the audio visual, audio video upgrade for the commission chambers. That's something that will expand our abilities and improve our abilities to communicate with the public in that electronic manner, and that would be something that we could consider as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'd just point out that I've had some discussion with our rural reporter, Dave Baumeister, about allowing the media to have more direct access to our meetings at our new meeting room. And I'm sure IT, IT would, would work with them to, to get that done. In fact, I did talk to Monty about it, but thank you.
You know, in my mind, IT is probably our biggest opportunity area. Carol sent out a publication or article here a couple of weeks ago about, you know, the growth of some mega counties, Clark County, that's, you know, Nevada would be a good example, but as Minnehaw County grows, I mean, to expect that everybody or how, people to be continuously coming down here to renew their license, licenses, pay their taxes, I mean, the more we can expand our IT to keep people, and especially younger people, they don't, you gotta explain to my 27-year-old where the county courthouse is. I mean, they, they'd prefer to do things online. So to me, if the more we could expand the IT side of this, just makes sense because we try to keep people out of here, but at the same time provide a, a good service or better service by being able to do it online, registering to vote or whatever it takes. Just seems like we have a lot of opportunity there. The auditor needs something too?
We have two items. The, the first item on our list is the administrative tool for, it's for our FOIA requests, our Freedom of Information Act. It's all very paper form, manual process today. And so we're suggesting and would, and ask you to consider that use of that software for, to help improve that, so to have it be a more electronic process. And then the final item is something you touched on, is the commission's touched on, is just some type of an administrative cost for how we manage the 37 and a half million dollars. There's going to be a cost there. We're not, you know, it's a estimate at this point, but we want to just make sure you're aware of that.
It's more than beer money.
Yeah. So currently, we have roughly about 26.5 million identified within this bucket of internal requests that we feel are eligible under current guidance.
Okay. Can I go back and ask a question about the external? The 66 million that was identified in those projects, is that the total cost of those projects without any quote partnership agreement with the state or each of the individual communities?
Yes, those, the total of those projects came up around 66 million dollars, yeah, just for our portion that, that they asked for. So.
It may not be the total, it may not be the total cost of the project, you know, those entities may have, probably have some own funding, but that's just the portion they asked for us. So that's my kind of segue into another, so there was a question about state matching funds.
Apologize, my mic goes on enough. So Carol provided me a little bit of information on what the.
They propose, so the Department of Agriculture and National Resources would manage those requests that come in.
We might, why we need new AV equipment?
Yeah. So anyway, the, as part of Governor Gnome's budget, she includes $600 million of American Rescue Fund allocation, right? And then as part of that, the D A N R would review criteria for requests on water projects, and they have a funding criteria, which basically kind of says that if you have a service population of up to 1,000 people, they would, the grant would match up to 80% of those. If you have a service population up to 2,500, they would match up to 5, 5% of that grant. If you have a service population above 2,500, where I think Minnehaw County would, projects would qualify, the 30% grant up, and then all these are up to a maximum of $5 million. So, you know, you kind of think about it, well, if the numbers work out, we could give, match $5 million for these other projects. But there is an exception to the $5 million, it could go above that if your current water rates are below $55 for 500, 5,000 gallon. So if your water rates below $55 per 5,000 gallons or $75 for 7,000 gallons, you know, if that's your current water rates, then that grant could be above. you know, if that's your current water rates, then that grant could be above $5 million. But I would kind of think about it primarily as states is, you would, they could grant up to $5 million or would match up to $5 million of our ARPA fund for water projects.
Unfortunately, nobody gets a water bill from the county.
Yes.
Could we change that?
We don't want to. Okay.
So, I think from there, we'll go into just our review of some additional internal projects that have been identified through the use of, if the proposed US congressional legislation passes.
So, as, as we've mentioned before, there's the, the bill that was passed the Senate that's now being considered by the House. So, we've kind of identified those areas that could potentially be considered under that if that were to, to pass and be, and, and the current requirements under ARPA eligibility would change. So, these are things that currently are not necessarily allowed today. They aren't allowed today, but we wanted to just make you aware of them so that you could keep them in mind as we go forward with the next steps on this. As, at any point, they could change the rules on what's eligible and these could come into, just could, could come into discussion. So, the proposed changes would allow flexibility for the county to reassign roughly $21 million in total to, a portion of that would be to infrastructure, like such as roads and bridges and other general county services. So, one project that we had identified as under that general county services bucket would be the JDC improvement or repair replacement project. That could be considered under that revised legislation if approved. And then, the second item is dollars, additional dollars for our road and bridge infrastructure within the county. And then, and you can see we had just a line called general services. That general services line could be public safety salaries. It could be other pay-as-you-go infrastructure that we might need within our county. It's really a more general bucket that we could consider other needs that are currently not budgeted. The fourth item that was identified as a potential fairground improvement that were, that were discussed as potential projects. I, I believe Mark could probably speak to more of maybe what he's considering in that area, or Carol could. And then, the fifth item is general IT-related projects, related to cybersecurity and other things like that. Under current guidance, the IT-related work has to be tied to a COVID-related measure of COVID mitigation, reduced social distancing and things like that. If this proposed legislation were to go through, it opens it up to increased IT needs within the county.
So, the infrastructure, they give, they allow up to 30%, usage of 30% of your ARPA funds, which equates to about $11 million, right, for infrastructure? That's kind of your roads and bridges. So, you couldn't spend the whole $21 million on roads, bridges, but you could spend up to $11 million. And then, there's a, a $10 million provision for just the general services. So, which is kind of a very open-ended use.
Commissioner Karski?
Please.
So, just to make sure that I'm thinking about this clearly. If, if this legislation passes, that's been passed by the Senate and is hopefully going to come up for a vote in the House. If that legislation passes between the 26.5 million that you had identified earlier and then this 21 point, 21 million, $250,000, those two amounts added together would be the total amounts that you've identified that we could spend. So, I mean, we're oversubscribed internally is what I'm trying to suggest.
That's correct, right? We would still have a limit. We only want to get 37 and a half million dollars of ARPA funds that we could spend. It just gives us a lot more flexibility on how we spend that 37. So, that 21 and a, 21 million-ish is really more flexibility than we had before. So, yes, we could oversubscribe or easily spend all of the 37 and a half million on internal uses with that, if that legislation passes.
Thank you.
If I can just make sure I understood the comments, but I'm confident that this is what the numbers are. If you added all those together, the 26 internal and then the potential of another 21 ineligible currently, you got 40, almost 48 million, and then you have the 66 million for external.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, we got $110 million worth of requests.
Right, so it's with all government requests, you know, the requests are infinite, the resources are finite.
Not new to us.
Yeah.
That's correct.
The last million, 100, 500 is already included. We haven't finished the list yet.
So, this slide are the proposed 2021 identified items that we've captured estimates for. And they're, they were discussed in detail on the prior slides, so I won't go through them in detail again. These total roughly 1.1 million today. And as I identified, we don't have the jail salaries for 2021 on there because we need some further discussion and analysis on that. But at this point, this list here is 1.1 million.
The sheriff's office registered nurse for the jail, that 324,000, is that just one year's funding? Or is that all the year's funding?
That is the estimate from March 3rd, 2021 through the end of the year.
Okay, so it's just a one-year's funding, okay.
Yep.
So, these are monies that have been obligated in our current budget that we could reimburse ourselves for.
Correct, these have been expended out of our general fund at this time.
Okay. So, that is the one that we want to address by the end of the year.
Correct, and so, what we would propose, you know, knowing that today is not a formal commission meeting, that if there is request or you'd like us to move forward with this, that we would bring these back to the December 28th meeting for formal approval. And part of our, our grant supplement conversation, we would have those be on the agenda for that time.
Commissioner Berger?
I obviously still have questions about the two human services expenses because of the rental and utility services, we were already getting through the South Dakota Cares Fund or whatever, and we would have, and this would be specifically to remove liens.
South Dakota Cares funding just started in December. And so, these would be the dollars that we expended from March 3rd, 2021, up until that, that funding started.
And so, my question would be, and I know we've gone around and around on this, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
Whether those monies are going to go back into the general fund or if they're going to be credited to individual accounts. And so, that's my concern.
Be okay, Commissioner, if we included it on our December 28th agenda?
Yes, yes.
With the thought that we could have an answer by then?
Because that's my concern.
Address that?
Yep, we can certainly work with state's attorney to get that answer for that meeting.
Anybody else or comments about including this on the December 28th agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I won't be here, but let's do it.
I guess all I have to say is I really appreciate Susan's and Ben's and everybody else, Tyler, Carol, I'm sure Carrie, everybody else that's worked on this. This has gotten to be, it's a sizable dollar amount, obviously, but the amount of work you've already put in is amazing and the information you've provided us is very much appreciated. So, thank you for all of that. 112 million roughly ask and $37 million need is great and the resources are limited. But Susan, I know you've become the expert and you probably could be hired by just about any county in the country.
Don't say that.
I know, just based on her knowledge and just what she's put into the amount of research in looking at all this stuff. And yeah, I agree, don't say that, but it's true, and, and thank you.
Thank you to the department heads too, one, they came today, but two, they've all been doing a lot of work behind the scenes too, just digging what can we, what can we use this money for and stuff. So, we just get to listen to the information and make the decisions, but somebody else did all the work before us, so thank you for your time, guys.
That was my comment as well.
Okay, okay.
I, just in, as we conclude here, I think that we have a lot of experience on budgets as a group here. We have more requests than we have money for. In fact, I, I got a call two weeks ago, I think, from a theater group that wondered if they could have a piece. But we can't obviously afford all of them. And I certainly think that when you fly in the airplane, they say, you know, if the masks fall, put your own on first before you put it on for your neighbor. And so, I think we need to look at our internal, internal expenses first. That said, I think we should be thrifty and use the green visor or whatever, that's an old expression, I think, to, to look at them and cut some of those expenses. And then, on the outside stuff, I'd like to make sure that what we spend money on is stuff our grandchildren can use because they're going to pay for this.
All righty, so we'll probably do this again in January, maybe? Is that kind of the thought so far, or? Okay, so for right now, let's take care of 2021. We'll play it by ear and we'll see what legislation does. I mean, we're sitting waiting for the state, we're waiting for the federal, especially in that last list for the 21, 250. I mean, those are all game changers for us and we, it's going to have an impact on decisions we make. So, keep the second Tuesday, no, no commission meetings and it'll just be a working session to discuss these things as we go on. It might be one or two more, so. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And we'll just adjourn our meeting. Oh, we got a public comment. Anybody here for public comment?
Since I was mentioned earlier, I thought I probably should come up and comment. I'm Dave Baummeister, and today I have a new title. I'm your rural reporter. And I cover county business for Minnehaha Messenger, Del Rapids, City Journal, Brandon Valley Journal and Garrettson Gazette. Anyway, what I had talked to Commissioner Barth about, this is something I had in my mind, actually, for a number of years since I started this. I was really spoiled when I was down in Yankton. I used to be the publisher of the Yankton County Observer. But down there, county that's, you know, one-tenth your size, the school board, the city and the county all had specifically designed media tables. We could plug in to the speakers on the recorders. Of course, they didn't have cable recording it down there. But that's what I had spoken to him about and that's what he mentioned. And I thought that when you're looking at upgrading your facilities, that you might think about us. You know, we, we had people from three different radio stations and two newspapers down there. Looks like there's three of us here today. Yeah, if you think of something where we could sit off to the side, see what's going on up here, see what's going on the front, we could get pictures maybe a little better. It's, would be better coverage for you guys. But when you're looking at upgrading the commission chamber, that was just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. You, you and the media have been great friends to the county commission in helping get things out, so excellent advice. Thank you. All right, anybody else for public comment? We will be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.